All right, thank you for your participation today. We have our public comment period. And I see a number of people are here probably for an issue that we will have on our agenda, or that we do have on our agenda. I would just offer this, I think we're all aligned in terms of the desire to preserve the canyon. And to do that in a manner which will allow us to continue to enjoy it. Do you want to say anything before we jump into public comment?
Todd, I think it's great to listen to the comment and I think that as we work through it, it'd be great to hear the comments there as we find solutions.
And of course, again, not trying to start the public comment, it's your time, just indicating that I think we've heard what Ben said in the past, but certainly what a comment you care to make is for you to make.
Within three minutes.
Yeah, there's a three-minute timeline for a comment, but be aware that I think we're aligned with you and with what you said. Nonetheless, there may be other public comments or even relative to that issues. Any public comment?
Good morning. My name is Karen McLeod. I'm an American Fork native. From high in heritage, probably four generations back. I'm a sister, I'm a daughter, I'm a mother, I'm a wife. I'm a business owner. I am one voice. American Fork Canyon has been a catalyst to bring all of our voices together. And that's why a lot of us are here, as she said. It means the world to us and helps you make your decisions and have a good strong base for what you choose to do today. If we have a good, strong decision and have a good base to stand on with the resolution, a good, strong resolution, I hope you take the next step and review the CE1 zone, special use permits, and everything you need to do with the CE1 zone. I think it's very critical for the 99% with the watershed and the enjoyment of the canyon to keep that zone in place and keep it strong. So you take care of people that voted for you and people that you represent. I am a voice, we are a voice together, you represent our voice, and we need to take this to the next level. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
As you know, my name is Jeff Johnson. I'm a longtime Utah County resident. I'm a practicing physician here in Provo, been here for thirty years. I appreciate the commissioner's willingness to adopt a resolution to try to protect American Fork Canyon. I think we need to send a strong message that Utah County land can't be included in the Mountain Accord, especially since there was no representation for Utah County in that process. I personally favor the resolution that Commissioner Lee has drafted, but regardless of which version is adopted, I think it must remove the Utah County land from the Mountain Accord. Then after we do that, we must have a local committee formed to chart the course of the canyon in the future. And I feel strongly that we should excuse those from participating in the committee who may have the appearance of receiving influence from the developers of that area or those who would wish to be developers. Some of the media have attempted to portray those of us who oppose the development of the canyon as a bunch of rebellious rabble-browsers radicals. Just wanted to mainly get up here and show you that we represent a broad spectrum of people from every walk of life in Utah County. We're not any particular group, all kinds of religions, all kinds of things, people who enjoy different activities in the canyon, and we all want you to save American Fork Canyon for us.
Thank you.
My name is Robert McFarland. I'm a user of the canyon for over twenty years. I'm a resort skier and a backcountry skier. I think the resorts are big enough. I think what we have up the canyon is a unique asset in its wilderness quality and its non-commercial quality. And it's one of the few places you can go in the central Wasatch to do multiple uses. You'll see representatives, horseback, four-wheel drivers, snowmobilers, motorcyclists, you're aware of that. What I wanted to share with you though is, my family lived downstream from a ski resort called The Canyon Resort. We had a five-generation ranch in East Canyon, Utah. We put conservation easement on it. And the water quality in that stream was very good in the seventies and eighties. And then it was a blue-ribbon fishery, East Canyon stream. And then Canyon Resort began intensive development by Alpine. And you can see it on Google Earth if you look at it over a period of fifteen years. The development was intensive in the High Alpine. That soil is very sensitive, vegetation's very sensitive. And that river went downhill to where it was an EPA, it was an impaired waterway by EPA ratings. And there's research on that, and I'd encourage you to look at the independent studies. The independent studies showed that resort development in the High Alpine was one of the main contributors to the degradation of that stream. And that's why, you know, I think Snowbird is different today than it was before. Dick Bass owned it and didn't have resources. Now it's owned by Ian Cummings. He was a 400-list person. He's worth over $500 million. He got over $100 million from the sale of PCMR. And they have money now. They're spending $30 million this year in Salt Lake County to improve the resort. And what they can do in the canyon is different than what they could do several years ago. But what I urge you to do is not only taking the 416 out of Mountain Accord and bringing it into the Utah County process, but also look at the zoning. I would encourage you to create a zoning task force to go and look at the High Alpine, EC1, EC2 zones, and get appropriate protection, whether it's slope. In Salt Lake County, you know, they have FCA, 30% plus, they don't allow them. You know, you should look at things, best practices around other counties and get protections in place because the storm is coming, Snowbird is coming. They have money, they have land, and they're trying to get more public land. And I think that the county needs to do what they can to protect the watershed. So I appreciate the time that you're taking. I appreciate the efforts you're taking to gather input because you don't want to be on the wrong side of this issue. The public is unanimous, you know, unanimous behind to support the canyon, unanimous to preserve the canyon. And I don't think you're gonna, you know, protecting, preserving, and keeping it balanced and away from just the 1%, making it some exclusive club is gonna be favorable. So I appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
My name's Robert Shelley. I'm a resident of Alpine, grew up in American Fork. And I've spoken here before, but I just am amazed at how many people, once they hear about this issue, care about it passionately. And I think Snowbird underestimated how much people love this canyon. Who've grown up there and use it for what it is. And I would, I support the adoption of the strongest resolution possible and believe that we need to form citizen committees to discuss the future of the canyon. You know, yet I don't think the canyon should be changed much because just the way it is is what makes it so special. It would be like some of the Narrows in Zion to say, "Well, more people want to go there, so let's widen them." That would destroy it. And, or Tim Cave, "Let's widen Tim Cave so more people can go through." Well, that would just destroy Tim Cave. And I think developing American Fork Canyon would destroy American Fork Canyon. And there's people from all walks of life, like Ben said, that use it in all different ways, and it's the only place left for all of us that you can do that. And I appreciate the commission being behind, you know, stopping what's been taking place and adopting a process so Utah County can decide for ourselves what's best for that canyon. And we appreciate your support in that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristen Shelley, and you both are American Fork. And I wanted to tell you about the Fourth of July weekend that we already spent it up, American Fork Canyon. I've probably talked to about thirty different groups of people, fishermen, peacemakers, motorcycle, jeep, I think top ten horseback riders.
You're talking, go on now.
Did you guys ever go up American Fork Canyon?
Oh, yes.
Good job. Thank you for doing that. The two things that came out of all of these conversations, this wasn't thirty people, this was, you know, groups of people, was, number one, they're unaware still, and number two, they're appalled and incensed that Snowbird would see this under the fence and that Mountain Accord would allow, that they would swap our land. And it's a day they're celebrating freedom of voice, and they have no voice. And so it was universal that they were incensed that they're not going to be heard. And there has been a lot of public outcry, and Mountain Accord has responded to that, that they're hearing, but they're not listening. They simply need to take our land out. And, and you know that, we appreciate you being on board with all of your constituents and asking that we get to decide about that. Yesterday, we talked to Dave Fields from Snowbird, and he, unlike Bob Bonar, who's been very secretive and snuck things in, Dave Fields said he would love to see a gondola up American Fork Canyon. They would love to increase their footprint there, and this land would allow them to do that. And so I believe the resolution, the strongest word of resolution, resolution by Commissioner Lee, they need a verbal kick in the pants. They think we're stupid. We're not, we're capable, and we can make a decision for our own land. And we need to tell them in no certain terms to keep their hands off. Allow us our voice and our freedom. And the other thing I wanted to say is when you send them the resolution, apparently they have been able to find the delete key in their proposal because Lainey Jones from Mountain Accord said Snowbird needs to remove it. Snowbird is saying Mountain Accord needs to remove it. Send them a black sharpie along with your resolution.
My name is Dave Fields. I'm vice president of resort operations at Snowbird. I thank Ms. Shelley and her father for the time we spent on the phone yesterday. Just one clarification. As I mentioned, my personal opinion about a gondola connecting Snowbird to American Fork Canyon, what I was illustrating is that if any of that were to be considered, that is for the citizens of Utah County to get involved and be involved in that decision. That is why we supported the American Fork Canyon vision process and why we tried to be as inclusive as we could with that and have opened that up to anybody interested in that conversation. There's been a lot of misinformation out there about these two issues. There's a Mountain Accord land exchange, and we are very supportive of Utah County Commission and all of you and all of the citizens being involved in that process. That's why we're here today. It's why we've reached out to all kinds of different user groups, is we are not, as some would say, trying to do this under the radar. We've been reaching out to Utah County leaders and citizens throughout this process and will continue to do so. It's how we do business at Snowbird. A couple other items that I'd like to just clarify. A land swap as proposed in the Mountain Accord would involve property for skiing and snowboarding in Mary Island Gulch, most of which is property owned by Snowbird. Snowbird currently operates on 500 acres of mostly private land in mineral basin. Mary Island Gulch is mostly private land owned by Snowbird. We requested the approximately 400 acres be included in the Mountain Accord land exchange to provide avalanche control and a better lift alignment for skiers and snowboarders in Mary Island Gulch. A land exchange does not permit, nor do we desire, to build hotels, private homes, or condominiums on lands received through the land exchange. Snowbird has been and will continue to be a good steward of the lands on which it operates. We believe in a transparent, inclusive process to determine the best future of these lands.
Thank you for your contribution.
Thanks, James.
Hi, Mark Allen.
Hi, Mark.
You haven't talked to us yet.
I came to Fox Hollow at your invitation.
Mark Allen, I represent 7100 households as of last night. That represents about 25,000 people, I guess, here. Thank you, Greg, Larry, and Bill for what you're trying to do. I've got some surveys here that we've run over the last little bit that talk about public trust, which is not very high right now. I've got data that suggests that 86% of the people support the Resolution A, but I don't think it's quite strong enough. With all due respect, Larry, Resolution B, which is the one that I think you crafted, is one that looks like it came out of Salt Lake County. And it, okay, but it appears that way because it's kind of, wow, so impossible. But we appreciate what efforts are here trying to coalesce. We have given you gentlemen our support. We think this is an opportunity for you, all three, to make a statement to the public. The approval ratings of trust are 5%. The strong trust is at 5% for our county commissioners. It's about 13% for our mayors. So this is a chance to really lead out and send a really strong message to Mountain Accord. With all due respect to Snowbird and their work sniffing, they will not build hotels on the 416 acres. They've got 25 other 100 acres. The essence of a lie is not the message, the words you use, it's a message that's being conveyed, and I think that's the problem here. I can't imagine Ian Cummings saying, "Okay, Bob Bonar, go and trade 1,400 acres down to 400 without a plan." It makes no sense. So I support what Robert McFarland said about zoning. We need to look at some zoning issues up there. We're gonna have a task force for that. The other thing is, if we have everybody on the AFC Vision stand up and move one chair to the left, that's not a clean process. We grassroots survey here, I'll lead with you, and you can look at it, but it's over 80% that say that we ought to have a grassroots-based decision-making process then invite trusted city leaders and trusted businesses. So it's, we've seen what Mountain Accord has done. Their processes have been very difficult because they've got a mixture of private interest and funding up there that we ought to, we ought to show them the way to be done. So I really appreciate all the efforts that you have done. And we do represent, we're going to, last time I was here, I think we were about 5,000. That's a couple weeks ago now, we're seven. Next time I stand in front of you, I think we'll be probably closer to 10,000. So I hope that you'll take these data points here, there's some very well-thought-out suggestions and comments in here that ought to be rolled into resolution. But we strongly support what you've done. And you probably have some of your fingerprints on what Resolution A is too, as well as you, Greg. So we're here to help. We've been called that we're here is the problem, but really, I think we're here to help, and we have no agenda other than helping. Thank you, thank you.
Is that different than the email?
No, this is the same as the email. I just wanted to be part of public record. It's easier to read than...
Wasn't for me, I was able to scroll right through on my iPad.
Six hundred pages, right?
Well, the first graph was 202.
Yeah.
I live in Highland. I have a few concerns about this. Oh, my name is Emmeryn Schutze. I don't know if I can spell that for you. E-M-M-E-R-I, last name S-C-H-U-T-Z. First of all, I don't really see the need to have more ski area. I live in North Utah County, I can get to Little Combe Canyon in about 40 minutes. When I lived in South Utah County, I could get to Sundance in about 40 minutes. I really don't see the need to have more ski area. Another thing is, once that land is developed, we'll never get it back. And we, we see in our county and in our state and in our nation that more and more land is developed and we slowly lose our natural areas, and those areas are very precious to us. My biggest concern, however, is water. The number one thing that is affecting our ski revenue in this state is not how much ski land we have, it's whether or not we have snow. And in the last 15 years, we've seen an increasing pattern of drought. And when we have snow, we have fantastic ski revenues in this state. But when we have years like last year where we don't get snow, it doesn't matter how much area is owned for skiing, there's not going to be any natural revenue. My family has farmed in Highland for many years, and we have multiple years let our land lay fallow because we were afraid of not having water. Our land is laying fallow this year because we're afraid of not having water. And we do not have the lake effect snow that Salt Lake County has. We cannot afford to take any risk to our snowpack by having it more trodden down. We just, we can't afford it, we don't have enough water now. I think, I know American Fork, Lehigh, Highland, probably many other cities are on water restriction as it is. We can't afford more.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. Great to be here. I'm the old company. I've been three weeks in, I feel like I'm part of the party guys here. I brought your photograph, you guys here. Oh, my name's Willie Holden. I'm a user of the canyon once in a while, quite a bit, actually. But I just want to bring this photograph to let you guys know that what we're trying to save here, right here in that area, that's upper mineral basin. And I do want to thank Dave Fields for coming to the Fox Hollow. That was great for you to show up and do that. So they have been somewhat open in that process as well. You guys have a good Fourth of July?
It was warm.
Warm?
As warm as it could've been.
That's right. I spent some time down here at our booth, and I also spent some time up in the mountains, of course, and I spent some time with my family, and that's the most important place I could've spent my time. But good old Abraham Lincoln, he mentioned it's a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. You've heard that over and over. And he gave this very address. To me, that means we are a government about the people, right? I mean, it's the people's voice, it's for us. And our whole organization, the whole reason why we started this is because the information wasn't there, and we wanted to get people informed about what's going on in their backyard and be able to have a say. And I think that we've done that. And I spent countless hours up in the canyon along with our group, and we've talked to people over people. And it's in like the conclusion that most people are saying, I've talked to, they want to keep the canyon how it is. They want to keep it accessible for their generations, for our children. You mentioned you like horseback riding.
I get enough of it that I enjoy it.
Yeah, we all want to get more of it. I spend a lot of time mostly mountain biking, hiking and trail biking photography up there at our 25 years. And honestly, when I'm riding down my mountain bike and I come across horse pies and horse poops, and I go, "Down a mountain bike?", I get pretty upset. I get stuff going up on my face, my back, and I'm like, "Oh, dang horses." And then I hear some motorcycles coming up. I'm going up this hill, not too far, trying to make my goal, and I hear them coming. I'm like, "Oh, no, are they coming?", you know? Have to get off my bike, and I try to clip back in. But you know, what I'm trying to say here is, I accept that, to me, it's not that big of a deal because they have as much right to use the canyon as I do, and everybody does. You know, we're all the different aspects of our recreation up there. And the beauty of this whole association, that we've come together as a group, for you as a group, doesn't matter who you are, what you do up there, what activities you do up there, the most important thing to us is saving the canyon how it is. And that's what we're doing, you know? We're all compromising, we're kind of getting rid of our differences, and our prejudice, we've been here longer, we have more life, you know? We're saying, "Hey, forget about all of that, that's meaningless. Let's work on to save the canyon how it is so we can use it." And that's why I hope that you guys will enforce when you do this resolution. You know, the mayors are coming forward, the groups are coming forward, and they're sharing those same sentiments for us. Thirty seconds, huh?
I think you said that the last time you spoke.
He did, he did.
I'm just gonna read the saying, "As we, the people, support this and work towards keeping this canyon a place of refuge, a place of solitude, a place of escape, the rigors of life and commercialism, a place to rejuvenate our souls and appreciate the wonderment of the Creator, join the people to protect and preserve our canyon." Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Other public comment?
I live in American Fork, I have for 10 years. I am not a generational Utah County person. I myself grew up in Cat Valley. I have no intention of saying anything today. But I want you to understand that regardless of how we feel about the development of this canyon, whether we support Snowbird or whether we support the preservationists, the process that has gone into this reeks, the lack of representation for this county, is deplorable. I feel like we're watching a bad John Grisham novel. And it doesn't just affect Alpine, Highland, American Fork, and Cedar Hills, it affects this whole county. Even somebody in Santa Claus should be offended that they were never taken into consideration because that watershed affects them. And I'm so offended as a voter of Utah County that we have been left out of this process. And that, no matter how you feel about the development, that has got to be offensive and that has got to be fixed.
Thank you.
My name is Daniel Jensen. I'm from Provo. The representative from Snowbird said that they've been trying to include people in the process, and they've not been trying to see things in under the press. I think with the hidden peak development, where things went from a low-key ski hut to a very, very huge building that is visible from every bridge for, you know, 30 miles, my understanding is that Salt Lake County was not going to approve the zoning for that and permits for that to be built, and that Utah County approved it largely because nobody knew that that was going on in Utah County. People from Salt Lake County knew that they needed to be involved in the public process regarding zoning for Snowbird. People in Utah County had this kind of slipped in under their noses. I think that perhaps we should, in addition to taking the kinds of measures that we need to for this resolution and giving strong language about what can be done about the Mountain Accord, I think that perhaps there needs to be reconsideration of how people are given notice of issues relating to zoning in the areas of Utah County that are visible, that are used, but that are not part of any communities where people are, when, you know, in a city, people are aware of their own zoning issues in the city. People are not aware of something that's happening in a county meeting that is not in their jurisdiction, I mean, in their city jurisdiction. And I think that we should do more to help people know about these kinds of issues. I think that some things would be very different, as we heard before of the person who was talking about her experience talking to users of American Fork Canyon this weekend. Even though we have now thousands of people involved in this process, this is still something that has not really reached public notice enough or what it ought to be. And so I think in addition to taking measures to deal with the present threat, we should take measures to deal with issues of public visibility for the future and so that we can do a better job of preserving spots throughout our county that are important to us.
Thank you. Saying no other comment to close our public comment period, move on into our agenda. Thank you. All right, on our consent agenda. Continue number nine.
Eight.
Nine. Oh, nothing serious. Right. Continue nine, 10, and 11. Number five, we're going to move on the regular agenda. I was going to move 13 to consent, but I'm trusting my head. Also 14 and 15 to consent. Number 16 through 19 are all of the same type of agreements. But the agreement that was supposed to be seen on, let's just hold those for a quick step. Uh, 20 to strike. At the request of the, uh, the appropos, we did not take action today.
22, we can continue for two weeks. We don't want to put that if you pick.
Okay, so 21 is okay to go to consent? The 22 will continue for two weeks. They go to consent. And, uh, is there any funding involved with that issue?
No, there's not. Lending that equipment.
Okay, there's no, there's no money involved in that. We're good with that.
I've got.
No question on that related to the same thing. So, um... So the bringing equipment and labor, Forest Service brings equipment and labor. My only question is, is who brings the, the, uh, the spray, the chemical?
It's a good question.
I didn't see that in the agreement and I assume there's some involved unless, unless we're doing this by hand and we're just removing them.
Or all the equipment's the removal of the weed control.
It's a good question. I don't know who's providing the chemical. I think it's Utah County from what I understand from this agreement. This is...
You may have some help there.
This work would be doing anyways. And the purpose of this agreement is just so that the USDA or the Forest Service can provide additional labor and then they can report it in their numbers.
It does say that we will mix, not over the size.
Yeah, I mean, I know we're going to do it. It just isn't good. Mr. Tanner?
Yes. The, uh, the funds do come from them and we just take their chemical and we're spraying it. So, they're supplying the spray.
They are supplying.
Yes.
The Forest Service is supplying the chemicals.
Correct. Yes. Yep.
So it would be nice to clarify that, I believe.
Okay.
Uh, I don't want to make a big deal out of this, but with that understanding, if we can change the agreement, if it's going to take forever to get it changed, just making know the minutes that we understand that they're providing that chemical. If we can change it so it's included in the agreement, so be it. And that would be my suggestion.
Then I move that we approve, uh, Consent Agenda, item 16 with a stipulated change. Second.
They have a motion second that we approve item number 16. Uh, would you understand the chemical would be provided by the Forest Service, so on favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion period three, please. All right, so maybe to the regular agenda. Okay, item number one. On our regular agenda, I'd like to talk about the 4H program for a minute if I could. And, uh, we have an employee that is dedicated and time and effort to the 4H brand. It helps with the riding bucks and that type of thing. Sherry, would you please, uh, come forward?
Hello?
Well, I know that this is something you don't like to talk about.
Horses? I got horse in my brain. Yeah.
Well, we appreciate that you have a horse in your brain.
Oh, I'm glad you do too.
And we'd love to have you talk about it, but the point is, now that I've got you up here, I want you to know that you're the employee of the month.
I am? Well...
Is that okay?
Well, like, what if I said no?
You can do it anyway.
Okay.
You've been nominated.
I have been.
If you want to take a few minutes and tell us about what you do at Forest, please do so.
Well, I teach horses. Um, oh, I had a big old spiel. I've been worried about this all night.
You have a hot crap arm with trails of Willie riding on it.
Yeah, and I said, tough. That's what I said. Yeah, when he said that, I thought, we're supposed to be up there. We was there first. Remember the pioneers and stuff? Horses are number one. So, yeah, I'm a 4H horse leader and I, I'm passionate about evidently. Um, so, and I didn't know I was going to be something else today.
Well, you may not show up, but you knew a lot of words.
Um, good possibility. I wouldn't have. But yeah, well, you want to hear about 4H then? Or you just want to give me a plaque? Oh, I'm happy. Give me chocolate.
Let me suggest that, and I'll, I'll give you a copy of this written verbatim, but I am not going to read it verbatim.
Okay.
But it suggests that you have many admirable qualities, which I think you do. Uh, and that, uh, you're the kind of an employee that the county can be proud of. So thank you for representing us so well. Uh, Sherry began working for the county in May of 2002. That was right after she participated in the Winter Olympics.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure what competition you were in, but I couldn't know.
Had to be horses.
That's usually in the Summer Olympics.
Oh, okay. I'll remind the winners. Yeah. Yep, pull the...
Her current title is a reporting clerk three. She's also served on the Utah County Employees Association Committee and was the secretary this past year. She meets and greets each person as though they were an old friend and makes them feel very welcome, which is important, I believe. She's a compassionate person who always makes sure that she spreads happiness to everyone. Uh, she often puts others' need ahead of her own. Uh, if she has to go, even if she has to go without, takes pride in her work, goes the extra mile in everything she does. Uh, she's always found wearing a warm smile, even now when you're not making happy.
Scared to death.
Uh, offering a friendly hand or sharing an interesting horse story. We'll have to talk sometime.
Horses, okay.
I've got some interesting horse stories that probably aren't as glamorous as yours, however.
Oh, I'd like them.
Uh, Sherry's excellent work ethic and her personal skills along with good horse sense.
Okay, all right. Getting better every minute.
Choice of words intended, I think.
Uh, stemmed from her upbringing in Buckville, Utah, where she came and experienced with horses and various questing activities. She's been with horses all her life, next to her family. They are the love of her life. Uh, because of this passion, she's served and participated in 4H for over 25 years and is one of Utah County's finest 4H leaders. Spent countless hours with the youth, teaching them competition and horsemanship with great emphasis on maintaining excellent sportsmanship and conduct. Uh, she's an awesome mom of five children, has 14 grandchildren, loves them all to pieces. Fortunately, uh, we are fortunate rather to have her working in our department. This obviously comes from your fellow employees. We appreciate the tremendous job she does. Congratulations, Sherry.
Thank you.
For being the employee of the month. If you'll come forward, we have some precious stuff. You're spreading paraphernalia here.
Oh, you bet.
There's the rider, there's the model that's got company in it, and here is a... Okay.
Well, thank you.
Sherry, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was nice. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, now then. Okay, number seven is the, and, uh... My, uh, my thinking in, in looking through the, uh, the initial accord, I'm sorry, the, the initial resolution was not to weaken that, but sometimes less is more. And as I was looking through it, there are some things that I thought were repetitive. And I was just trying to clean it up and make this feel a little better. I was in no way intending, intending to reduce the impact it would have. There were some things that I felt like, uh, we could, we could actually get the accord folks to listen, uh, more if, if it was more succinct and it may otherwise be heard by them. So those were my reasons. Let's just work through it here and come to a resolution that we can all agree on here, so.
If I could just go ahead and point out on resolutions, just for informational purposes, um, that there, that have whereas's and now there for's. And I think it's important to understand that the whereas's are, are information of how we, how we got to this point. So when you read through the whereas's, don't look at it as a directional thing or in a, in a direction in which we're going, but it just mainly states where we've come from, either fact or perception of how we got to this point. I think that's important as we look at a resolution. In my opinion, the now there for's are using the strongest part in the resolution because that gives us direction going forward. So as we kind of look down through the, some of this wording and so forth, if we just kind of remember to keep that in mind.
Okay. Uh, so as we, um, work down through this, I had it in the third whereas, the, the reference to section four, which is where it identifies the geographic area within that. And, and it was stated, I felt like it was redundant because it's in both places. So I was referring to chapter four, which is on the, on the second page in the, in one of the whereas's. So I was just attempting to, to remove that, uh, new publication I was reading in. Um, the other thing that, and I don't think...
So instead of just all the wording that you have in here geographically talking about it, that is the same thing you have in section four.
Right.
It's just stated without putting all the words in there.
Right.
So it's the same, it's just that it says section four regarding chapter.
And then, and then it runs section.
Uh-huh.
And it basically includes the same, the same discussion that's included on the third whereas on page two. Defining the area of Mountain Accord. So that's all I was attempting to do there. Um, then I added the word, it says whereas Mountain Accord in its program charter limits the county stakeholders. I was going to say limits its area and stakeholders so that it's defining the fact that it's, it's the area that presented, that we keep it from out of Utah County, which I was attempting to stress. And yet, it's whereas, as you stated, as opposed to without.
I wonder if we could read that program, chapter, section 3.1, and ask if it does reference what...
I'm, I'm okay with leaving those in if, if I feel like that's the thing we need to do. I was just attempting to get it out.
You're talking, I mean, the parentheses, right?
Yeah.
Parenthesis part?
Yes.
You want to keep the parentheses? Yeah, I think that's the same probably to the other. Is that in there?
Yeah.
Because it does, that references their charter. It is their charter. Yeah, right.
Yes. It's the, the charter, not the accord, the draft document. Is that what you're...
Their pro, their program, uh, charter?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I think it's just referencing back to that. It just gives a reference to their charter as opposed to the draft accord. Right.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay. And, and again, I'm, I'm fine. I was just being consistent in removing those references, but I'm fine with leaving them.
Taking out that one section here, adding your word in there, taking out the county, or I clarify it.
Right, okay. And then I added the word whereas Utah County has not been actively involved in the planning process. To say that we haven't had any involvement, I don't believe is, is correct. Uh, I think there was some involvement. And I, I did attend one meeting of the mountain board where they talked about, I think that that was the only meeting and did not actively participate in that or, or that process since. I felt like by participating, it actually diluted our influence with them because we would be one voice of 20 as opposed to being our own entity, being able to represent our interests. I felt like that had more, uh, more impact than it did by saying, well, you had representation there, therefore. I mean, I think that was my only thing.
And I, I, I appreciate that because I didn't know. I heard all along that there was no participation at all. And so I think that word being actively involved in there is, is appropriate, especially with what you're saying.
And, and I think there may have been others that participated in some of this.
Right. So it's more factual.
That's what you had in there. That's all.
That it wasn't, that there wasn't some, some sort of discussion on there, it was just, like you said, diluted potentially.
And then I just added in on the other one that they generated a draft proposed agreement. And then just, uh, I just reworded that sentence. It basically says the same thing, I believe.
I don't know what the difference is, but I mean, draft, proposed, agreement, or proposed, if I would then...
Again, it's not a big issue for me, none of the others.
Neither. If we want to leave that in, that's fine.
And my understanding, I, I think part of, part of that, and I realize this is referencing the June 23rd draft, my understanding is, is that that's either has been or will be changed before it is issued.
Yeah, and that's where my concern is. My, my concern is that, is that we've been talking about this for some time and I've heard a lot of words and had communications. But until we actually have it in writing or we see some action where something's been taken where they've moved with their word or their, their, their blueprint or whatever it is, um, I, I haven't seen that happen yet.
The, the thought I think I had at this time, and I'm not sure, was the fact that there may be agreements other than the June 23rd agreement.
Oh, I see. So why don't we just add all other, or all other agreements?
If we can say, just to be at that proposed agreement slash Aaron pass.
And all subsequent agreements or, so could we add that? Maybe that would be...
This is the latest draft and I've checked and it, it's still the one that's online. So I, I've not seen any other draft version.
I'm understanding they're redrafting some of them. All I'm wanting to do is be inclusive. That's what I'm getting at.
And I think that after the whereas's, then it says this, the draft agreement and any future version that are up. So we try to be inclusive.
So we're still, so we're what has got us to this point?
That's, that's fine. That's fine.
Over the steps.
Dave, we talked about the next, uh, and I understand the economy down below was, that was my, oh, never mind. Don't, don't even listen to that part of it.
I'm not sure we grabbed it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm, I'm reading my notes and I don't think it made it into anything, not even like changes. So I'm just kind of self-talk here. And then when we got to the land exchange, we went into all the detail again. I was just attempting to simplify with the, uh, on the bottom of page two versus 3.2 land exchange. It just appears to be...
So the ones, I guess, so the ones that are crossed out without any input and it's involving Utah County struck, it, it makes it consistent to go by...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Since, since we changed the front part of that, that seems appropriate to strike that.
That's correct. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Can we keep that draft accord page one in there as a reference?
Yeah, I thought we were keeping all the parentheses.
We were keeping the rest of it. Yeah.
So it was just, it's just taking out that, that one, those few words. And then the, uh, the land exchange, the detail of that, I was just attempting to streamline that. If, if we need to leave that in there, I'm, I'm okay.
This, this statement in failure to include Utah County as a participant in the mountain court process. I, I like that language because to me, it, although there might've been some opportunity beyond originally, this, this came up in the last little bit and I think there was a certain, I, I really feel like Mountain Accord, um, I think if they were to look back and look at their processes, they would probably even acknowledge that there was a failure in, in, in going through the process with Utah County. So I, I am in favor of leaving that, that sentence in.
The question there is, was, was it their failure or was it that we just took off the distance? So I guess...
Yeah, well, I think that as we put, you know, as a whereas, that, that the mountain court, you know, the program check, uh, chart, charter and the failure to...
If we just say that the program charter failed to include Utah County.
Uh, that's fine. I just want to make sure that's putting on a charter.
Well, can I interject right before participant as a full participant?
And that'd be fine too, as a full participant.
Because that, that then states that we weren't on equal ground with... Because that then states that we weren't on equal ground with everybody else.
Right, that's what we're, that's what we're.
That's what we're attempting, right.
So state that again, so we can make sure.
So instead of striking it, we're gonna say, and the failure to include Utah County as a full participant in the mountain accord process, instead of striking it, we're gonna re-put that in and add full participant.
Okay, somebody write that down.
I think, I think.
Renee Scott on it.
Whereas notwithstanding the year you drafted, so the Mount Accord program charter, whereas notwithstanding here, program charter, failed to include Utah County as a full participant?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's what we're attempting to say there. Okay.
On that sentence, I'm sorry.
It was on page two, the last whereas on page two.
On that sentence, which further up, as a point of clarification, we decided then to keep the, whereas Mountain Accord has generated a draft proposed agreement.
Yeah, it's been really bad.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I decided.
I'm clearing through now to the bottom of the page.
Okay, and then again, my intent on pre, on the land exchange verbiage, was just to deal primarily with American Fort rather than getting involved in the canyon side of things, but it's not a big issue.
And the reason why I like that left in there is because I think it shows that, because I've heard over and over that this is kind of a little issue, it's a little issue. But in this module with the land, if you add up all the land that is going to the ski areas or going back into public, it's pretty close to fifty percent of this module. So I don't see it as being insignificant, it's not something that was just kind of overlooked, in my opinion. It was something that we can look down through and say, if you add this all up, it actually comes to, you know, substantial within their agreement, or it should have been, so I, just listing how we got there, I would love to keep these in.
Okay.
Who just, let me, have this for you and see if I...
Since we've already stayed aware, as is the timeline, doesn't?
Yeah, this is, this came straight from now.
That's right. Three point one refers to there.
Right. Yeah.
And then.
As to the?
Three point five, uh, three five one.
Three five, yeah.
So, since I'm not an English teacher, that above the three point three, I assume we're changing that for grammatical errors, the as follows or the colon, I don't. I'll leave that to smarter people than you for.
I don't worry.
No, right above the three point three land exchange, we've stricken comma as follows, colon, and added just a semicolon.
That's because if you delete this entire section, that would be.
Okay, so if we keep that, we're?
Keep it in the colon, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know when I go back what I have.
I don't profess any English, I'm a professor of any sort. Okay, so then we get down to the paragraph following the three point three section, or three point five one.
So the entire description of the land exchanges will be?
Remained, that's correct.
And now you're in, whereas in exchange.
Whereas in exchange, the four and six, Utah County going to private snowbird's key resort ownership, Mountain Accord efforts would, this is what I would suggest, Mountain Accord efforts would result in the benefit of public ownership of the acres of land located in the Little Comble Canyon, which is presently in the ownership of the school, rather than taking the not located in Utah County.
And can we add approximately four hundred and sixteen because they're, just to cover all of the different plans that were out there? You know what I mean? Because there were a lot of different things.
The exchange has extracted this specific hundred and sixteen acres, is that?
And I think that's consistent with what we have up above.
Up above.
That's really not kind of nice, it's not consistent with that, four hundred and sixteen acres. I mean, I think it would be inappropriate for us to reach over the line and put other things on something inside.
Well, I'm not saying in the three point three part, I'm saying where we've gone down in exchange, aren't we below that draft accord now?
Yeah, you're talking about down here on some, yeah. I think it's just consistent back to four sixteen with what we've stated up here, and that's one thousand one hundred and seven, consistent with what they've stated.
I just wanted to make sure, what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I want to make sure we're coming to see all the proposals and everything that's been talked about, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think we are, I mean, I feel like we are. Do you think we're not?
No, that's why I just say, if we say approximate, then, you know, we've had, people you know, and say two hundred and seventy.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, I think the four sixteen includes, because there's little slurs.
Right.
So I think that's included, and the four sixteen, I think, is the.
The man.
And going back to your earlier thing, saying this is what is there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was there.
Yeah.
Okay.
The whereas.
So my suggestion on the next whereas was.
So to not have every?
No, 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 don't, sorry.
Was to try and clarify, it's not the participants that would receive the benefit of the public, because it goes beyond them. And so what I'm attempting to say is that Utah County going to private snowbird's key resort ownership, Mountain Accord efforts would result in the benefit of public ownership of a hundred and eleven hundred and seven acres of land located in the Little Comble Canyon, which is presently in the ownership of Snowbird's Key Resort. So I'm just trying to clarify that it doesn't go to the ownership of the participants in Mountain Accord, but rather to the public as a whole.
Yeah. And then, I think that, and then just canyon instead of, you see the spelling?
Yeah.
So are we okay with that change? Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, okay, and we may, I'll get that, so you can see it, if you think that, you got it?
Just make sure to be canyon.
Little Comble Canyon, I just.
Well, it's, there's a misspelling, it's canyon, it's canyon or right now?
Draft.
Not that big of a deal.
Oh, are you looking at my draft?
Yes.
Oh, I'm working off your draft?
Well, I'm.
That's, that's, that is okay, that is, that is, yes, we need to correct that, that's correct. I was looking at mine, see, mine is better, mine spelled right.
Oh, yes, of course yours is.
Okay, thank you. All right, and then. So are we still striking that next whereas, because it seems we've done that?
Well, again, again, I think we've addressed that.
Right.
Okay, that's fine, are you okay?
I'm fine with that, since we addressed it.
And then down, down below on, and this is not one that's in either draft at this point in time, it is a current edit. Just before, it says whereas participants involved in AF vision.
Yes.
I think we need to clarify that this is who has been involved, not implying that this is who would be involved.
Yeah, and if I could, could I speak on that?
Yeah, let me just suggest the change though, like to do that, I think if it was to read whereas participants involved in AF, see vision have included.
Yes.
The public and the following entities, saying that's who has included, not respecting, I don't want it to imply that that's who it would continue to include.
Yeah, and so with this, again, on whereas, that is kind of what has happened in the past, and this is in no way reflects a steering committee or anything of that nature going forward. This is just stating again what was in place in the past. I think that's important to note, so that it doesn't, it's not, it's not a therefore, we're going in this direction, it's just a whereas. I think that's important to put in there, that's past tense.
Okay. And I think it's the down of the now therefore.
Yep.
So. I think the intent that I was thinking here was to clarify that we want it out, we don't want any issues involving American Fort Canyon, Utah County and related, excuse me. Let me, let me come back, if you were to take my revised number one, now therefore, this is the way it would read, Utah County requests draft accord and related attachments in any set of versions that are to be amended to recognize and defer issues involving American Fort Canyon and other area resources to Utah County and related stakeholders. So that it includes more than just the American Fort Canyon, if there's discussion of other issues, monumental, whatever the case may be, that it would be included in that as well.
Yeah, and I, and I see where you're going with that, and I like the words delete, and somebody mentioned it up there. My worry is that if, I would rather, I would rather negotiate when the negotiation parts start, start from a basis, a strong, a stronger foundation in which, in which we say, you know, delete instead of recognize or defer, that they recognize that we're deferring, just because if we go through a process of saying, you know, delete them and let us go through our process, I've heard over and over, again, this is all, this is all on the phone and talk and talking, and that's what worries me, is that we're not coming from a real strong base and saying, you know what, you know, back off and let us go through our process here in Utah County, and that's the reason why I would prefer that they delete. And when I'm talking with the other stakeholders up there, I find it ironic that some of the stakeholders that are a part of the mountain accord process, they have the option of saying, you know what, we're gonna pull our section of this out, in essence deleting it out of the mountain accord. And so if they have that same option in a different county or different stakeholders, and if they have that option to say, I want to pull it out, I think that we should have the same option to say, we want it deleted, so that we can then go from a basis of strength and then, and then come up to an understanding of where we're at. And that's the reason why I like the, I like the delete part in that.
I have a strong argument with that, I think though, I would like to say that we need to understand that we're gonna deal with it.
Yeah, so maybe we can incorporate somehow, so that, because I, you know, I don't know how we, I'm not an English major, you know, I don't protest in that, but I don't have any problem with.
I think we make it a number two. Regardless of which one of those is one or two.
So add it, so just separate it right there.
So separate it.
And then put another one up for the weak part.
So we state, we state what we want, that we want to work, that we want to decide everything, and since then number two, since we're still under the therefore, now go ahead and delete all that because we're in charge.
So it would say that Utah County requests?
It would still say as number one, the exact same you said.
The draft accord, recognize and defer issues.
To the period, and then we start at number two. So still under that now therefore, delete all provisions dealing with land located in Utah County and that draft accord be specifically amended to delete all provisions related to the proposed change of ownership of the land located in American Fort Canyon. So make that just the number two.
And then all the way through to the period on that, because it does involve.
Are you saying delete number one, like we changed?
Like we changed it, and then?
Okay, like we would change it, and then, and then with number one on the other version, it would become a number two at that level.
Well, from the period on.
We don't have to put the whole thing on the top part, we can just put now therefore delete, or whatever, we can, we can word that and then continue.
That's what I'm, that's a little more clear for them.
Yeah, I don't mind with that, we don't want to include that.
May I clarify?
We need to make sure you understand what's being said.
Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Utah County, Utah as follows. One, Utah County requests that the draft accord and the related detachments and any subsequent versions thereof be amended to recognize and defer issues involving American Fort Canyon and other area resources to Utah County.
All right, wait, wait.
Yes.
Two, delete all provisions.
Hold on, hold on, there was, what was, there was something added in there?
Yeah, she got it. And other area resources.
Okay.
Yeah, American Fort Canyon and other area resources.
Okay.
To Utah County and related stakeholders. Two, delete all provisions dealing with land located within Utah County, and that the draft accord be specifically amended to delete all provisions related to the proposed change of ownership of the land located in American Fort Canyon from public ownership to ownership by Snowbird's Key Resort, including any property exchanges involving land located in Utah County. Which makes our next.
Well, as of right now, we're restricted to, so. That's what I proposed.
You might want to keep current two, maybe as number three, because that references the sections of the document with that.
Right, well, I'm saying that as right now, so we need to state, and now say that number three.
So two becomes three?
Yes.
And then three would become four?
Yes. Except for our three, that is now four, I'd like to add one word where it says, will allow Utah County and the other stakeholders, and make all other stakeholders, just so.
All of them.
All others, letting everybody know, we want everybody involved.
So take out that, that all?
And, will allow Utah County and all other stakeholders.
And then, and then the end, where were you? Uh, and then, and we crossed out then?
So.
Yeah, we crossed this out.
And changed it to American Fort Canyon?
Yeah.
So.
Okay, with that, I don't care either way. Okay.
So section?
Not referencing that, we're just saying American Fort Canyon.
Right, just saying American Fort Canyon, right?
Actually, we should say for American Canyon and other to match.
That's.
Well, I think we have as the verbic in my second draft, is that correct?
Right, that, that's, that was. Right, but we said and other resource areas or whatever we said, we probably ought to add that to the end of that.
Because, you mean, the one that we added in number one, in the new number one?
Uh huh.
So it says this will allow Utah County and all other stakeholders to proceed with the planning process, identify, a planning process.
No, where we said, I'm talking in our now therefore number one, recognizing defer issues involving American Fort Canyon and other area resources.
Right.
So what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that our new number four, after for American Canyon.
You're just tying.
Just so that it's consistent, and we're tying all of our things together.
Well, this is number three, we're talking.
No, he's, what he's talking about.
It's number three, but we're making it, but it will be our new number four.
It's this one?
Yes.
And what, and yours to give me?
And so after that, you have proposed American Fort Canyon.
And, American Fort Canyon, right.
And we should add, because this is what our, the exact verbic. And other area resources.
Yes, that's right, okay.
All right. And then, do we want to read that, it's the same?
Sure.
Number four.
Number four.
Mr. Attorney, did we get that okay?
You could do that.
Well, it doesn't, except we have, we have all.
But that's, but that's the new number four.
The thing that will hold you some, I'm fine with you, because it's awfully thick right here.
Oh, dude. This number two was. Yeah, so that was, that was the same. This become number, or?
And that sentence now reads, this will, section four now reads, this will allow Utah County and all other stakeholders to proceed with the planning process.
For.
With the planning process.
For American Canyon.
So we're, we're.
We're just at the end.
Right here, the deletion of part.
This will allow Utah County. No, I'm sorry, we're back on the. This will allow Utah, no, this will allow Utah County and all other stakeholders to proceed with the planning process for American Fort Canyon and all other resources.
Yes, I did.
And all other resources, or just?
Whatever it said in the first.
And other area resources.
Yes, to match it, word for word, was my intent.
And so this is just a step, because there's a, there's a long ways to go, we're not gonna accomplish everything with just one, one resolution. It's gonna take us, take time and effort, but all, as you say, we're trying to include all, we set, put a lot of all in our stakeholders and processes, and so this is just a starting point for us to go forward.
Okay, so we think we have that, are there any other changes? Okay, so we think we have that, are there any other changes? If not, then Renee, subject to a final review by us to make sure that we're all understanding that that is what we agreed to. A motion for the approval of that.
I move that we approve.
We want to get this out.
Yes, we want to get it done before then. Thirteen, we have it that we approved an adoptive resolution, the resolution as stipulated and agreed to with all the changes Renee has.
Second, and that we.
And that we approved.
And that we intended.
Yes, and that, yes.
Are you all in the office with Renee?
Yes.
What else?
I'll be back, yeah.
We'll make, we'll.
We all have a two thirty here, so yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be back in a minute, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you for that. One approval of at least one action. All right.
For employee of the month.
All right, uh, the only, the only question I've got on number eight is a little bit of a concern for the party that we're delegating this going to, and I don't want.
Make sure, make sure and sign in in any way.
Yes, sign the roll, sign the roll. No, so as it stated right now is because, and we might have to do this every year if we change portfolio.
I understand what I. Is that rather than, I I just suggest, should there at least be something that says that she would withhold.
No problem.
I I just want to get her some support.
I don't want to support her at all. And I I I agree, and I'm wondering, instead of, instead of putting a a name in there, if we put a title in that, that, you know, that it's administrative assistant, that way you have to.
Administrative assistant, Julie portfolio commissioner, so that we don't have to do that.
Yeah, yes, that that's my suggestion, is that okay?
That would be up to Julie, I mean, she is the one who is authorizing this person to act in her behalf.
Are you like, Angel, okay with that?
You don't even want to get up and give him the mic to say you're okay? She shook her head yes.
Okay, so that was going to be.
Yeah.
All right. If a motion, if you're around a motion number one or.
Then I move that we adoptive resolution for the purchasing agent with stipulated change.